All right, I think we will go ahead and begin. We've given folks a couple of minutes to log in. If you're still logging in, thank you again for joining us. My name is Megan Lee Erickson. I'm the Vice President of Member Services with the Minneapolis Regional Chamber, and I welcome you today to our Issues and Insights Legislative Breakfast Series. This morning, we are having two candidate forums, one for the Minnetoka mayoral race and one for the Golden Valley City Council race. So thank you again for joining us. Before we kick off our program today, I want to make sure that we are acknowledging and thanking our sponsors. So first and foremost, to our presenting sponsor Huntington National Bank of Minnesota, formerly known as TCF, to our premier sponsor CenterPoint Energy, to our supporting sponsors Gulf Public, MRA, the Management Resource Association, Weber Johnson Public Affairs, and to Wells Fargo Bank, excuse me, and to our media sponsor Finance and Commerce. Thank you again to our sponsors for your support. The Minneapolis Regional Chamber is a nonpartisan organization. We do not publicly endorse any of the candidates. So all views that you hear today are solely those of the candidates and not necessarily those of the Minneapolis Regional Chamber. Also, for your information, all candidates who filed in these two races were invited to participate today. We are recording this session. We will make it public, and you will receive a link to that recording post the event. With all of that being said, I think at this point I will kick it off to our moderator. It is our Director of Public Policy with the Minneapolis Regional Chamber, John Paul Yates, and he will take it from here. Thanks again for joining us.
Thanks, Megan. Thanks, everyone, for joining us, and big thank you to our candidates who are willing to join us this morning. We're going to do two forums this morning, starting with the two candidates for Mayor of Minnetoka. Then we'll move to candidates for, there are two seats up for election in Golden Valley. We have three of the candidates with us this morning. Just quick ground rules, we'll ask candidates to abide by 90 seconds for each of their answers. Both forums will go about 25 minutes. I will try to get as many questions into those 25 minutes as possible. And we've asked candidates, obviously, it's a forum, not a debate, and just to keep their answers related to their own vision and ideas. That's what people want to hear, and also so we don't have Zoom chaos. So thanks to everyone for joining us. We will start by allowing our two candidates for Mayor of Minnetoka to introduce themselves to us and maybe briefly explain why you're running, and we will start with John Cool.
All right. Thank you very much, first of all, to the Minneapolis Regional Chamber for inviting and having us today. So real quick about me, I grew up in Iowa. After graduating from college, I moved to the Twin Cities, really to start my career. I was very fortunate. I met my wife, and I married way up. She's a Director of Education. So as we started to create our family and started to focus on business, we quickly found that Minnetoka was our forever home. My business, I've always focused on very large retail accounts, really identifying those companies that are going through large transitions or total transformations that are needing more focus to be able to work in the large retail area. I have been both within international and domestic businesses, even converting some international businesses back here to the U.S. My wife and I, we own a small business together within consulting and agricultural storage, which is quite a combination, long story. But we definitely seen the challenges that small businesses are going through right now. Everything from cash flow to hiring staff, it's very much a challenge. I'm running to ensure that not only the process of hiring a new city manager is done transparently and well, but also that we prioritize diversity, equity, and inclusion in all parts of city business going forward. I think to end, I really want to build on the successes that Minnetoka has had as a city, but I want to keep in mind that our future doesn't have to be our past. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, John.
Thank you, John. Now we'll hear from Brad Weersum.
Thank you. My name is Brad Weersum, and I am running to be reelected as Mayor of the City of Minnetoka. Thank you to the Minneapolis Chamber, Regional Chamber of Commerce for hosting this forum, and thank you to the sponsors for providing their support. I've lived in Minnetoka for 30 years. My wife Karen and I have been married for 38 years. We have four children. We raised our family in Minnetoka. Two of my children are twins with Down Syndrome and severe disabilities. They live in Minnetoka, and I am thankful that our community welcomes them here. I love this city. I'm very proud of it. And I've been honored to serve Minnetoka as mayor and as a city council member for 19 years, or nearly 19 years. And I'm running for reelection for several reasons. First, I offer the experience and leadership skills to successfully serve as Minnetoka mayor. Proven leadership is needed at this time in our history. Second, this is a very challenging time for everyone, for everyone in leadership. The pandemic has taken an enormous toll on the people of Minnetoka and people everywhere. Throughout COVID-19, I have worked to listen, to lead, and to demonstrate empathy and support for Minnetoka residents. I urge everyone to be safe and to have hope and confidence that we will get through these challenging times together. Next, being mayor is a people job, and I truly enjoy the work. Given my public service and business experience of over 40 years, I provide a depth and breadth of experience to the city. I have analytical and strategic skills that will help Minnetoka prosper in the future. And finally, Mayor of Minnetoka is a nonpartisan position. That's good. Everyone knows that. But what does nonpartisan mean? For me, it means to truly be nonpartisan. It means neither soliciting nor accepting support from any political party. It means doing what is best for the City of Minnetoka as my top priority. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mayor. And first question will be for Brad Weersum, and then John will go second. And as much as we would like to think that the pandemic is over, we're still managing out of it. And so as you look toward, if you are elected, how will you help your small business community in Minnetoka continue to manage through the pandemic? We'll start with Brad.
Well, the pandemic is not over, and we need, our businesses need support. And the city has provided support to small businesses in terms of forgivable loans and grants, but that's not been available to everyone. And the other issue is, a lot of small businesses have hung on through the pandemic but are on the razor's edge right now as they, they've tapped their savings, they've tapped their credit cards. They are on thin ice, and they need continued support from the city. Now, both the city, the city continues to have programs available to help small businesses, but also the city is a clearinghouse for information to help cities, or excuse me, help small businesses get access to the support that is available through the, through the city, through the county, through the state, and through the federal government. And I think that's an important role because we are accessible, we're close to the customer, so we can help small businesses get access to funding and support, and we can be a conduit for both information and for funding.
Thanks, Brad. John?
Yeah, for sure. Huge failure rates with small businesses are happening throughout, throughout the entire country and sadly the world. You know, over the last several months, I have been meeting with about eight to 10 small businesses every Friday and really trying to understand what their challenges are and try to ideate with them ways of coming up with solutions that aren't necessarily a cost source for long-term the city or for them. And this is, this kind of small business forum is something that, the longer we have it, the more small businesses are joining. But one of the biggest issues that are coming up for them is all around staffing. Staffing, if we all go to small restaurants especially, you may see a sign that says, hey, you know what? We don't have enough workers, so be nice to us. We're trying. And so this is causing a couple of different struggles for them. Number one, the majority of them are having to lessen the hours that they're open just because they don't have enough people in the store or the restaurant to keep them open. So one of the things that we have started this week is we are creating, at least initially, a Facebook group that is connecting with other groups in the area. For instance, the Minnetoka High School Parents Association, the Hopkins Parents Association, also we're dipping into the Hennepin Tech and Normandale College groups. And so our small businesses are going to be able to say, hey, you know what? I have two staff positions open. And as we link all of these groups together, we're starting to get some conversations started, but this is only the beginning. As I'm talking to them, you know, the, so many of the job fairs that happen are very difficult for them. It's hard for them to attend, and then it's very hard for them to hire someone when Target is there often offering 15, maybe even more dollars. So that is the beginning of how I want to support small businesses. I'll turn it back to you, John Paul.
Thank you. And before we go to the next question, if you have a moment when you're not talking, feel free to drop your campaign website into the chat function. People can check it out as we go. Next question, we'll start with John. Affordable housing, it's availability, affordable housing is a problem throughout the metro area, especially in the West Metro. If you are elected, what will you do to try and assist with the availability of all kinds of housing, but especially affordable housing?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. I think number one, one of the things that, as I speak to developers, especially those that are doing a lot of business in Minneapolis, they're watching the Minneapolis race very closely because the whole idea of having rate control or rent control in Minneapolis, right or wrong, will change how they do business in the long term. Meaning that if rent control does happen in Minneapolis, a lot of those developers are going to be moving probably out to the suburbs to find new projects. One of the biggest areas that the individuals in Minnetoka do, Minneapolis do a great job on, and that is converting some of our older 30 to 40-year-old complexes into something newer and nicer. And that's one of my bigger focuses. We have a lot of great development that is already happening with new mixed housing, and that's, and that's great. That development, there's already a lot of things being talked about and worked on. So my goal is to try to have more of these older places that are also being worked on and that will be even a little bit easier to connect more affordable housing units into each of those. I would like to see our ordinance to take a little bit of the flexibility out of our ordinance and have more mandates of how many units are needed in all buildings, but that's a very difficult conversation. I'd at least like to start that conversation with the city council and, more importantly, with the city manager. I'll pass it back to you, John Paul.
Thank you. Brad?
Well, affordable housing is an extremely important issue in Minnetoka, and our record over the last number of years has been very good. You know, the Met Council does provide goals for cities in terms of affordable housing development. And even though people don't like the Met Council, they do provide a lot of valuable information. And Minnetoka has met those goals. In the last four years, Minnetoka has gotten 1769 new units of rental housing built in the city. Over 40% of that has been affordable. And we need, but that has not filled the hole. There's still a greater need. One of the interesting statistics is there are 54,000 people living in Minnetoka. We have 45,000, over 45,000 jobs in Minnetoka. What does that say? It means we've got more, we've got more jobs in Minnetoka than we have adults in Minnetoka. It means that if every person who worked in Minnetoka wanted to live in Minnetoka, they probably could not do it because housing is not available. So we need to continue to be dedicated and focused on encouraging more affordable housing. The building and transitioning of existing buildings is important, but I also am a champion of NOA, Naturally Occurring Affordable Housing. We have some aging housing stock in Minnetoka that are fine houses, they're smaller houses, they're good entry-level houses. But what happens when somebody ages out of those houses and goes to the senior living facility? A developer comes up and buys them and builds a McMansion on that property. That's a huge waste of opportunity for affordable housing. And people who know me as a mayor and as an individual know that I am notoriously frugal. I constantly look at what is the cost to the city for each incremental affordable home that we have because we can't keep digging into the public coffers. We need to figure out, we need to work with nonprofits and work with ways to develop affordable housing cost-effectively. And an important piece with NOA is that can be owner-occupied affordable housing. And owner-occupied affordable housing creates many, many benefits that rental affordable housing does not provide. So the city's working at it, we're working at it successfully, but the hole is bigger than our ability to fill it. And we need to continue to look for new and innovative ways to develop affordable housing in the City of Minnetoka.
Thank you. Yesterday morning, we hosted candidate forums for a city council in Bloomington, and I'm going to steal one of the questions because they thought it was good. And we'll start with Brad, and just for this one, you've got 30 seconds. You're in an elevator with a CEO, and you have to give a pitch to them to bring their business to Minnetoka. Why Minnetoka?
Minnetoka is a vital hub for, it has a good population, it's got strong business, it's got connection. We are the home of two of the largest companies in the world, United Healthcare and Cargill. But this is a vital business community that is at a crossroads of two major interstates. And Minnetoka is a destination. You will do well in Minnetoka because the city will help you establish your business, and you will find a large and educated workforce within the City of Minnetoka. We are very strong, and we can help you succeed.
Thank you. John?
I think it'd be very simple. This is the place where you can locate your business, and all of your employees are going to want to live in the city. There is nothing easier or more enjoyable in life to live in the same city that you work. And I think that's a very important point that we can share with all CEOs looking to come into the city. Not only is there a great balance of large business, as Mayor Weersum just pointed out, but also there is an amazing group of citizens and individuals that is an amazing mix of cultures, races, ages, and just an enormous amount of great families. Minnetoka is a place to put a company and have it stay there forever because it's a cool place to live.
Thank you. And now more broadly, we'll start with you, John. If elected, how will you engage the business community? And what would be your priorities to ensure that Minnetoka continues to have a strong business climate?
Yeah, I think, I think I maybe mentioned this just a little bit at the beginning, but I would continue to engage with small businesses. You know, there's so many small businesses, and there's so many types of small businesses. And so having different types of forums where they have a chance to air their challenges out verbally, I think, is very important. It really has opened up my eyes to some of the challenges that I was naive about. And so that is something that I would definitely grow. I think also that would be an opportunity for office buildings as well. We know one of the challenges that's happening right now in Minnetoka is especially office buildings that are not located on the 394 corridor. We have high vacancy in a lot of those buildings, mostly because businesses are grappling with, are they going to stay hybrid where working from home is going to be a big portion of their, of their future? So they don't need as much space. So we have a lot of buildings grappling with that. And so I would like to have a lot of very specific conversations with office building owners, especially if they need to pivot to either more open collaborative spaces or if they need to re-convert that into different types of multi-use buildings. But also with the larger companies, of course, we have six very large, established, successful companies in the area. And I really want to focus the relationship with them really around their vision and plans for sustainability and equity and all of those key pieces that all six of those companies have already identified as key future goals that they have. Because this focus on sustainability, equity, all of those things are also focuses of the city. And those are nice combinations that we can even establish a closer relationship with them as we tackle some very difficult conversations.
Thanks, John. Brad?
Well, I'm a business guy, and I strongly support local businesses, small and large. Among the ways that I've engaged is I've, I've been a member of the, when the Legislative Breakfast were going on through the Chamber of Commerce, I participated in those all the time. And that was a great way for me to meet your members and meet small, our business people in our community. The city has a number of programs specifically targeted at new businesses and businesses in general. But we have our Open to Business Program, and that, and we're part of that. We're part of the Hennepin County CEO Next Business Institute, and we work with the Small Business Administration to make resources available to businesses. Clearly, networking is a key part of building relationships with businesses. And anyone who wants to call me to talk about their business is welcome to do so. I love going out to businesses and seeing, see their operations. If you're looking, if you want to reach me, the phone number on the website in the city is my cellphone. I'm accessible to everyone and anyone at all times. But we need to have programs and understand the difficulties particularly of small businesses, and we need to work to build, strengthen minority-owned businesses more than we have. And I think that's really important. Minnetoka is increasingly diverse. Our diversity increased from, and Minnetoka is not a particularly diverse city, but our diversity has increased from, to 17% of our population, or excuse me, our non-white population has increased to 17% of the city's population. In 10 years, that's an increase of over 50%. So we need to work with businesses. We need workers here, just as John mentioned. You know, you go to a restaurant, and they're closed on Monday and Tuesday. They close at 8:00, when they used to be open till 11:00. I mean, we need workers. We need, so we need to help cities, excuse me, help businesses find ways to bridge that gap. By being an attractive community for residents, I think that helps, but that's not enough. So supporting businesses is very important to me. It's very important to the city. And we are working aggressively through our Economic Development Department to reach businesses and keep them informed on resources that are available.
Thank you, and we'll, we'll stay with you, Brad, on this one. You'll go first. Transit, transportation, what would be your top priority related to transit or transportation?
Well, clearly, getting Southwest Light Rail up and running is vitally important to our region. And I've supported Southwest Light Rail all along the way because, because transit is an economic engine for cities. And we know that Southwest Light Rail has faced some delays, but it's still proven already to be an economic engine. When you look at the development that is occurring in Minnetoka and Eden Prairie and Hopkins, all along that route, that, that is helpful. But the interesting thing is, a lot, when the New York City subway system was being built, it faced the same issues that we heard about when Southwest Light Rail was being built. It was just going to help the people along the, along the system. But in reality, that was a rising tide that raised all boats. And history has shown that the New York area grew specifically because of the availability of transit. So being pro-transit is being pro-business. I am pro-business, and I am pro-transit. So Southwest Light Rail is essential. But then we also need to build the connector hubs so that we can feed Southwest Light Rail and get people around the region and around our city effectively.
Thank you, Brad. John?
Absolutely, on light rail. Took all the words out of my mouth, so I'm going to add some additional things. I think in talking to small businesses, one of the challenges that they're having is more of the bus connector routes that go north to south and south to north, of course, that aren't necessarily following kind of the 394 east-west or even the corridor of light rail. They're missing out on a lot of employees that, that they're wanting to maybe pull from, you know, even Plymouth or Brooklyn Center. And the, the goal of having more bus routes and more flexibility there is something that they really want us to focus on, not just as a city, but also with the cities around us. And I think that's a fair point. I think, you know, public transit is not an overnight situation where you can just turn it on. We know other cities have had the ability to make small improvements even by using metro mobility for certain situations. But also, small businesses are starting to offer transportation through Uber and finding ways to be more creative, just to be that, that transit authority for their employees. So definitely researching and spending more time on truly north-south bus travel is something that I am going to focus on because it's a challenge. There's not an easy solution.
Thank you, John. And we appreciate both of your answers, and both of you being very brief. I would like to give both of you an opportunity to maybe give a brief closing statement, maybe a minute. And I think we started with John on the open, so I'm going to start with Brad on the close.
Well, thank you, John Paul. It's been a pleasure to be here with you today, and it's an honor to serve as Mayor of the City of Minnetoka. These are challenging times, and I think that experience and knowing how the city works is vitally important as we look to the four years ahead. I also pride myself on being the truly nonpartisan person in this race. And I think nonpartisanship is vitally important. I'm a moderate. I don't have a political agenda. When people push me on what party am I part of, I say, I'm part of the Minnetoka Party. I do what's best for the residents of the City of Minnetoka, and that's the standard I use. And I think that's important because increasingly in local politics, you will probably see people are coming in with a political agenda. They want to further the views of the left or further the views of the right. My view is, we need to do what's right for our city. We're in a good place, and I'm proud to say that I'm independent and moderate, and I think that's right for Minnetoka.
Thanks, Brad. John?
First of all, thank you for having this forum. I think that when you're able to talk business with business people, that really is invigorating to all of us. When we're talking about the future of Minnetoka, the future is absolutely bright. And so it is fun to ideate and talk about, you know, what our visions are, what Brad's visions are. We have two different visions, and that's exciting. It's exciting for people to have choice. I'm excited to bring some new perspective, definitely a new set of priorities to the City of Minnetoka. And I've enjoyed this process. I've enjoyed this morning. And I'm really looking forward to the next three weeks to spend a lot of time talking to the citizens of Minnetoka and those that travel in every day to Minnetoka for the businesses that they own or where they work, to really understand what their needs are, what their priorities are, what they don't like, so that we can start helping the new city manager have more background of some of the things that they should be prioritizing, and then maybe some other things that they should be taking into account for future decisions. And thank you. Thank you very much, and I look forward to the election on November 2nd. Thank you, John Paul.
Thank you. Thanks to both of you. Thank you both for running. Thank you for spending some time with us this morning. We really appreciate it, and feel free, even after the fact, if you want to drop a campaign website, anything like that into the chat function, feel free to do so. And thanks again for being here. We're going to pivot now to Golden Valley. I'm going to give those candidates a few seconds here. Thanks, Brad. Thanks, John. I'll give those candidates a few seconds to get their cameras on. Much the same as we just did with Minnetoka, we'll try to keep answers to 90 seconds. Did want to say, in Golden Valley, these are, there are two seats open on the city council that will be elected. There are seven candidates. All were invited this morning. I do want to say that one candidate, Joni Clausen, did accept the invitation to join us this morning, but had a last-minute issue that was, from a time standpoint, out of her control. So I did want to mention that she had been hoping to participate with us this morning. We have, and I'm just going by what I see on my screen, so I apologize for the order, but we have Andy Johnson, Julian Rosenquist, who is an incumbent on the council, and Deesa Lamir Anderson. And what I will do is, let's do opening statements, 90 seconds, and then we'll get in some questions. And I will start in order as I see you, so we will start with Andy.
Thank you, JP. Good morning, everyone. Thanks for the invite. And it's really a pleasure to be here with everybody, and like I've been saying, it's, it's just real exciting that we And it's really a pleasure to be here with everybody. And like I've been saying, it's it's just real exciting that we can all get together and talk about how we think our government should run. I'm Andy Johnson. I've, I'm from the north side of Minneapolis. I'm a twelve-year resident of Golden Valley. But during that twelve years, I've actually volunteered in the city government for ten years, a few years on the Boarding, Zoning Appeals. And currently, I'm a Planning Commissioner. Like I said, I served in the Navy for ten years, so the Second Fleet out of Norfolk, and then I served in a couple of national security posts abroad. And finally, most importantly, but I guess for this group, is I've been in, in addition to my public service, but I've been in private service for over twenty years as I as an IT manager, a software manager specifically. And I think that software manager gives me a really unique insight into that constant feedback cycle of ideation, creativity, feedback, piloting, and actually making substantial change. So that that excites me. There's some priorities in the city that I think we need to address. Among those are, or in that are very interesting to me, and as I canvass the city, I think they're equally important to people. First of all, having a focus of on on public safety, also on affordable housing. Similar to the earlier conversations, you know, if you work here, you should be able to live here. Also, we should focus our spending on the core functions of government. Definitely want to protect our green spaces and open spaces in Golden Valley. And something I think all the candidates have in common is, how do we increase communication? And like I said about that feedback loop, is how do we, how do we work that push-pull to get meaningful information out and to get increasing resident engagement? So those things are are very important to me, and I just, I really fundamentally, I just want to continue my ten years of service to the city in a in a different capacity. And I look forward to this discussion today. And I'm asking for everyone's vote, who's a resident of Golden Valley, for the Golden Valley City Council. Thanks.
Thank you, Andy. And next, we'll go to Julian Rosenquist.
Good morning. And again, thank you for this opportunity to talk to your audience. I'm also looking forward to joining the the chamber at the BOMA meeting later this month to talk more about candidates in our region. So my husband is a a small business owner himself and a member of BONA. So that's always a great opportunity to listen to regional discussions, so I appreciate it. Again, Julian Rosenquist, I've served four years on the City Council. And before that, during my nineteen years in Golden Valley, I also served the city on its Open Space and Recreation Commission and represented the city in the light rail transing transit process regarding the Botno Light Rail line, which is also known as the Blue Line Extension right now. And I continue to be involved in that, and again, because transit is an important, important issue. And even if the transit line for Botno is moving away from Golden Valley, we need to make sure we're connected to the transit options in our region. I have a JD from William Mitchell College of Law, and I practiced trademark law and also worked at a legal nonprofit called Legal Core, which actually found business transactional legal advice pro bono for small entrepreneurs. And I ran a program called the Inventor Assistance Program, which found a patent and intellectual property legal advice for those who had inventions that they wanted to turn into businesses. So again, I've worked in the small business climate, both from a nonprofit angle and also as a professional in my past. And again, my husband is a small business owner, so that's a big part of our lives. I'm, I would like to be re-elected to the Golden Valley City Council, because I believe in the work that we're doing on, in every respect. I believe in the direction we're going. We're a healthy, vital, safe community, and I'd like to keep us on track. All of the topics that we're going to be discussing today are incredibly important, and I really look forward to discussing them a little bit more as we go on. Thank you.
Thank you. And Denise Lamir Anderson?
Thank you. And thank you so much for the invitation and just all of the great work that the chamber does. I have the pleasure of being involved in some of the chamber work in my professional life with Taylor Corporation, and so have just a great admiration for for the commitment to the economy, job growth, and ensuring that we have good public policy. So again, I'm Denise Lamir Anderson. I'm a ten-year resident of Golden Valley. I live here with my husband, who is a small business owner as well. He runs a business out of our home in Golden Valley. And I'm running for City Council because I really care about the city. I am pleased with the direction that the city is going, and I would like to see us continue to make progress on our current plan. We've taken really great steps under the current City Council, and I want to build on that momentum. For the last eight years, I've had the privilege of serving in a leadership role on the Golden Valley Human Services Commission. During my tenure, the commission, which holds fundraising events to bring the community together and in turn allocates funds to charities who serve our residents in need. The commission has made some really important strides, including balancing our budget and modernizing our bylaws in response to current community needs. Professionally, as I mentioned, I'm a human resources executive at Taylor Corporation. Taylor has just about seventy-five hundred employees in the state of Minnesota, most of them in southern Minnesota. But we do actually have a small company in Golden Valley that runs under the name of Heinrich Envelope. I have experience with many of the problems and opportunities that the Minnetoka candidates spoke about this morning. There is a national labor shortage that none of us are immune to and from. And certainly, the idea of how we ensure that our businesses maintain vitality through this incredibly incredibly strange time in our economic history is really important. As an HR person, I have experienced actively listening to people's problems and maintaining action plans to solve those problems. I'm also, you know, deeply involved in conflict mediation. And I'm responsible for the safety, well-being, and engagement of Taylor's ten thousand employees across the across the country. And I take that very seriously. I think these are important skills that translate well into a city council role. There's so very much going on in the world right now, here in our community and more broadly. And I think people are craving thoughtful and compassionate leadership that addresses things like the environment, equity issues, city infrastructure, and of course, housing. So from my perspective, I think we're in a unique position where we can honor the strengths and the things that make Golden Valley so special while we plan for our long-term future. So I I'm really looking forward to serving so we can continue to move forward together.
Thank you. Thank you for those opening statements. The next question, we'll start with Julian. And we are the chamber. We are here to represent our members. And we're curious how all three of you will approach the business community, how will you engage the business community? And perhaps what are your top priorities for fostering a strong business climate in Golden Valley?
Sure. Thank you very much. Certainly, there are things that the city can do, and then there are things that the individual member can do to engage the business community. And certainly, as an individual member, part of what I do is patronize the the businesses in our town, get to know the people who are running them, talk to them about day-to-day operations and the issues they're having, being available to them, being able to send a text message when they've got a question about about things. Local government is very boots-on-the-ground in and out of of these businesses and getting to know people and making those kinds of relationships. So being able to know that Dwayne owns our liquor barrel, that Scott is our manager down in the valley, that Mike Nelson's got a small marshmallow business, you know, that he operates at his home on Welcome. That those kinds of things are incredibly important. So you engage small businesses and you engage our larger businesses. Golden Valley is a unique commi- a community, but it's like Minnetoka in the sense that it's a big draw for businesses. We're the headquarters of General Mills, of Allianz. We have a large presence by Tenon Corporation and Honeywell Residio. So it takes a lot of engagement there. From a city standpoint, what we can do, what we're trying to do, is be very clear with our vision, with our zoning, with our our structure for what we would like to see and how we envision Golden Valley developing. We've been working for the past few years on a downtown study and a facility study to look at all of our city buildings and infrastructure and services, to make sure we have an updated plan. And also looking at the four quadrants of what we call our downtown. And we've started with the Urban Land Institute, and we've been working with a consultant to really create a ten-to-fifty-year plan about what infrastructure the city can put in to make a healthy and vital downtown. And then how we can guide private development to make sure that we are attracting and are an area that is really attractive for businesses. Golden Valley is in a fabulous location, but what we can do is make sure that we don't just rest on our laurels, but we're very intentional about creating a healthy and vital and attractive destination for people to patronize, people to live, those kinds of people who support the businesses in the community.
Thank you. Denise?
Yeah, I, Julian took a lot of the words out of my mouth. I think, I I think really, one of the most important things that we can do is is show up. Show up at chamber meetings, show up and patronize our local businesses, be present and engage in conversation to really hear from from people who are leading business, what what's on their minds, what are their concerns, and how can we, how can we help? There are many times when I think a government tries to make good public policy, but they do so without, without really considering some of the unintended consequences that that could have to the business community. A a great example, I think, that many, many businesses sort of questioned towards the end of the summer was the the unemployment stimulus, where for many, many positions, particularly blue-collar positions, it forced many companies to have to raise wages in order to compete with what people were able to earn on unemployment. Certainly, the intent was not to incent people to stay home and not work and keep people out of the workforce. It was a very well-intentioned, very well-intentioned action. But the unintended consequence to many of our businesses was that we we struggled to find people. We had to raise wages, and we had to deal with wage compression issues with our existing workforces. So it's important that we engage in really proactive conversations so that we can understand when we're thinking about doing something. You know, how does the business community feel about that? Will it benefit them? And what concerns do they have about potentially unintended consequences? I think it's also important for us to look at, you know, ways that we can continue to encourage small business in Golden Valley. We have just some amazing small businesses, and we have amazing, amazing large businesses. And it's, it's wonderful that they can coexist. Julian talked about the the downtown redevelopment and some of the the facilities study, which I think are very, very important. And I think, again, just really focusing on what is this, what's good for the city and the business community today? And then where do we want to see ourselves in in ten years, fifteen years, twenty years? And then working together to try to create that vision, I think, is is critically important.
Thank you. Andy?
Thank you. In my time as in in the private sector, I've worked in, well, I've had my own consulting business. I've worked in small, tiny little software startups to, you know, massive multinationals. And the one thing they all have in common is this notion of continually moving forward. And there's always, there's always three pieces to that. And there's, they're voiced in different words, but they they basically come out as start, stop, and do more. And companies want to be very frugal and focused on their time, and I think government can do the same. So if I was to look at what the city government could do to facilitate that that increased business cooperation, participation, the first thing I'd do from a start standpoint is, for the past seven years on the Planning Commission, I've always had an eye on what does it mean to the business owner? What does it mean to the homeowner when we, when we make a standard? What is the cost of doing that? What's the practicality of doing that? And I've continually asked that question. You know, the Planning Commission is limited. We propose policy. But I think we've done some things in the right direction to try to, to try to get business here by creating different business districts, our mixed-use district, our three ninety-four corridor. So there's some real good opportunities there, I think, represent opportunities for business. So that's something we're we're starting. Also, just looking at simple things like standards and materials, you know, how do we, how do we work with businesses to 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 make sure that we're conforming to the needs of the city, but also not pricing ourselves out of the market? Because, you know, maybe St. Louis Park has a different standard. So we always should be looking at at costs when we we develop those kind of policies. There's definitely things we should stop. And one thing we should stop doing in the city is, what I've seen is a a little bit of politicization of the Planning Commission. The city has, the the city elected officials have the right to prevent, to propose different ordinances and enact them. I was particularly concerned when the tobacco ordinance went into effect as, because that took away revenue from businesses who legitimately came here to to, you know, serve their customers and be competitive. And that's just one more, it's anti-competitive measure that I that I would stop doing. Same thing to kind of demonize a valid business, like a pawn, payday lender, or a pawnbroker, precious precious metal dealer. Those are legitimate businesses, and we shouldn't treat them any differently from any other business. So I think we should advertise the fact that we are really open for business. Do more. I've been in the planning commission seven years, and I've, I would love it if we had more people to attend, in particular, more business people to attend. And what I would do is is to increase that communication to our business partners. So when we are having a meeting that affects them, we send meaningful communications. We have really good platforms. Let's improve the content. Let's not just say, here's an agenda. Let's say, here's what the the issue is. Here's what the content is. You know, everyone's competing for attention on social media and different alerts and notifications. So let's send meaningful things to our business community so we can get their input as we're developing these policies. Because it all, it all really comes down to a policy. When you have the policies in place, things flow. So those are my, that's my approach to to the city and to to governing, really, is, you know, start, stop, do more, and a continual evaluation of of how things are working and how things aren't working.
Thank you. Thank you for those answers. I'm going to give you guys the same question as the the two candidates for Mayor of Minnetoka. You're in an elevator with CEO, and you have thirty seconds to give them a pitch on why they should move their business to Golden Valley. And Denise, you get to go first.
Only thirty seconds. It's a fast elevator. So Golden Valley is, it's a wonderful, vibrant community. And it's a community that is attracting more and more young people and young families who are moving in as many of our seniors are moving to senior housing or just moving out of the city. And I think with that, we have a great workforce. We are centrally located, just minutes from downtown, right off of all of the central freeways. And I think there is no better place and no better workforce than what we have in Golden Valley. And I think that's, that's, you can see that based on the companies that have already chosen to make Golden Valley their home and their headquarters.
Thank you. Andy?
Thank you. Every day in Golden Valley, prior to the pandemic, there was a massive influx of people who came here to work. And they come here to work because it's a great location, it's minutes away from the airport, from other dynamic parts of the city. But more importantly, it kind of blends a great blend between a city of 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 activity and residences and businesses. Yet there's a plenty of green and open space. So you never feel like you're going into a crowded, you know, concrete-laid in downtown. Second of all, it's, it's really a beautiful place to raise a family. So if you wanted to come into this city and work here, it's, there's nothing better. And finally, there's a very responsive group of people. There's a very active community where people get involved and engaged to make things better. It's a very informed population who are constantly looking at at protecting the nature, natural environment, but also promoting our businesses.
Thank you. Julian?
Yes. Well, Golden Valley is wonderfully located, and we have a great mix of businesses and residents and a and a and a great group of residents who are educated, informed, and involved. And more than that, we also have a city government that provides high-quality city services and infrastructure. So you will have a reliable partner in making sure that you can be successful here in Golden Valley.
Great. Thank you. We've got about five minutes. I want to try and hit one more topic and then give all of you an opportunity to give a brief closing statement. So maybe if we can do one minute on this question, which is going to be hard because it's a tough issue, but let's try. Golden Valley is in the process of starting to hire a new police chief. Public safety, obviously, not only in Golden Valley, but almost everywhere is a top issue on voters' minds. And so I'm curious, as a candidate for City Council, what is your top priority for the city as they search for a new police chief? And we'll start with Andy.
Well, I think that the top priority has to look at the the policy that's created a lot of the need for a police chief. And there's a, there's a policy right now that's that's biased, basically. The the makeup of the commission that oversees the police force, that's going to work closely with the the person in charge of the police force, that is tilted in the in the manner of people who are biased against law enforcement. The policy itself, if there's one thing I could encourage people to do, read the bylaws of the Peace Commission and read the definitions, read it critically. And it omits key stakeholders who are in the beginning of even developing it. So I would encourage that to to really work with that police chief, that we actually look at the policy that he's going to be working under, so that we can get a really cohesive so that we can get a really cohesive representative group across the city and make long and lasting policy.
Thank you. Julian?
Well, I, I think that becoming the police chief of Golden Valley is a wonderful opportunity to be able to lead a force and a city into the 21st century. To really have an opportunity to take what is already a really great department and make sure that it is modern, nimble, and responsive, and deeply rooted in the community it serves.
Thank you. Denise?
I think it is critical as we search for a police chief that we do not lose sight of the importance of engagement and retention of our current police force. It is, we're living in an environment of the Great Recession, and no workforce is immune from that, particularly public safety. So ensuring that we understand why our police officers are proud to work for Golden Valley, that we're removing barriers that might be getting in the way of their ability to do their best work, and giving our existing police force a voice as we are shaping the future is equally as important as finding that, that right new chief who is going, who is going to be open to looking at new ways to serve the community, particularly as our community becomes more and more diverse.
Thank you. Appreciate those brief answers, too. And I think we'll move to closing statements. I know this is super brief overall, and we touched a very narrow swath of issues, so feel free to take a minute and a half on your closing. If there's an issue that you're passionate about that we didn't discuss, obviously, feel free to to mention here as well. And we'll start with Denise.
I, I will be brief because I know I'm the only thing standing between many of you and another cup of coffee and the rest of your day. But thank you again for the opportunity to be here. I, again, I believe that Golden Valley is a wonderful city that is moving in the right direction. And as both a businessperson, an HR executive, and someone who has been in a position to serve the city on a city commission for the last eight years, I feel like I'm in a good position to help move us forward in the directions that we want to go. With a real focus on things that I think matter to all of us, but particularly the business community. Things like ensuring affordable housing, a focus on equity, focus on fiscal responsibility in our budget and spending. And, you know, fundamentally, also really looking at how do we, how do we grow the city? How do we transform while also doing so in a manner that protects the environment for long-term sustainability? So those are just a few of the things that are on my mind as I think about the future of Golden Valley. And I, again, I believe this is a wonderful city that has an opportunity to honor the things that make us great while we lean into where we want to go and who we want to be when we grow up. So I am grateful for the opportunity to campaign with these other fine candidates, and I would ask anyone in Golden Valley that is heading to the polls to please consider voting for me on November 2nd.
Thank you, Denise. Julian?
Thank you very much again for this opportunity to speak. I am running for reelection because I believe in the direction that Golden Valley is going in, and I believe in Golden Valley. And I believe that we've shown steady, civil, respectful leadership through the most difficult of times over the past few years, and I'd like to continue to move us forward together. I've been working very hard on forming, for example, strategic partnerships so we can advance Golden Valley's interests. With a city of just under 24,000 people, really to, to operate well, we need to operate in partnership. Working with Minnetoka on bringing Bus Rapid Transit to Highway 55. Really excited about our housing initiatives and the first time staffing our Housing and Redevelopment Authority with a support staff person and a budget to be able to be very intentional about sustaining housing and creating new opportunities in Golden Valley. Working on improving communications, working on, with Xcel Energy on an energy action plan that will make us more environmentally friendly. We're doing important work here in Golden Valley, and I'd like to continue it and continue to serve the residents and businesses here. Thank you.
Thank you, Julian. Andy?
Thank you, and thanks for the invite. We've all been doing lots of canvassing across the city, and one thing that's really consistent is that people really like living here. And there's people that move for, for whatever reasons, but I have yet to come across somebody who says, I hate it here, or, you know, whatever. They, they really like living here. And a lot of the reason they like living here is because it's a safe, beautiful place. And my, 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 we all have very strong views on public, our public safety policy. One of the things that the chamber should know is that you were included on the task force that established the Peace Commission, but now you are excluded from the membership of the commission that's ongoing oversight of the Police Department. So I think that's really worth looking into. There's a lot of good intentions on this, and I just think we should reform it to have equal representation. But back to, I think, something more positive, but that's, that's a tough conversation. It's, it's tough, and, and we need to be agreeable, and it's okay, it's okay to disagree on the issues. My approach to, to city government is, is really what I talked about in terms of communication. And we need to get out and reach out to more people, but it's a push-pull. We have to get people in. And by, by, the importance of that is, we tell people what's important at a meeting. They decide if they want to attend or not. They attend. They give us their feedback. We take that feedback into consideration. We pilot it, we test it, we make policy, we enact it, we get feedback, and we get over and over improvement, and eventually we increase our quality of life and we get more people living here. So these things are all within our grasp, and it's, it's something I think we all share in that when people like living here and they like working here. And so finally, I just am committed to service. I believe in servant leadership. I believe in listening to people and learning from people. I've adopted a lot of different ideas, just walking through the city, having people bring up things that, you know, there's people who live here for 40, 50 years. So, and there's businesses that have a lot of things to offer. I'd love to see them at the Planning Commission. I'd love to see them more engaged in things that really affect them. And I just, I just look forward to continued service. So I'm asking for your support and your vote for me for the Golden Valley City Council by around November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. And before I give it back to Megan, I want to thank the three of you for joining us and also our candidates for Mayor of Minnetoka this morning. This is very informative. We appreciate you taking the time to be with us. And we appreciate you taking the, taking the time and effort to run for office. So thank you very much to all three of you.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you to all of our candidates. I'll echo what John Paul just said. Really appreciate you taking time this morning. Just a reminder for everybody on the call that we will be sending out a link. This video will be available for you to share with others. So please do that. Before we sign off, I just want to thank again our sponsors, our presenting sponsor Huntington Bank, our premier sponsor of CenterPoint Energy, our supporting sponsors, Goff Public, MRA, the Management Association, Weber Johnson Public Affairs, Wells Fargo Bank, and our media sponsor Finance and Commerce. Coming up, we will have one more Issues and Insights Legislative Breakfast Series for the year of 2021 that will be in person on Friday, November 12th, early in the morning in St. Louis Park. And the topic that day will be redistricting, so please keep an eye out for that coming up in November. Thanks again, everyone, for joining us here on this early Friday morning. We hope that you have a wonderful rest of your day and a lovely weekend, and we look forward to seeing you again soon.